I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with District One for roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're blessed this morning to have no other than the Bishop and the Presiding Pastor of the Greater First Deliverance Temple, which is in District One. At this time, we're going to ask Bishop Charles Little Junior to please come and give us our prayer. And then after he gives us our prayer, he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. At this time, Bishop Little.
Good morning, everyone. Dear God, we thank you for your goodness. We thank you for your kindness. We thank you for your attendant mercy. We humbly come before you as we open this meeting on today. We ask for your presence to guide our decisions as well as discussions. You set in all our ways acknowledge you and direct our path. Bless each and every person with wisdom and unity on today. And extend your blessings to all families of all the commissioners and those that are involved on today. As we stand here, Lord Jesus, we also ask a special prayer for those in Texas who have lost lives and loved ones. Wrap your arms of comfort and peace around them, giving them strength during this time of need. And may they feel your love and your support surrounding them. Help us, Lord, to move forward with compassion and understanding. And Lord, as we close on this prayer today, we ask your blessings while the officials are handling business here, that you will do something special for their families as well. And Lord, we ask this in your name, and it is so. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. If, uh, I'll just say for the... I'll say for the record that Commissioner Lowe, Chief Deputy Paul Foster, and Brian Mon present for roll call. The notice of the meeting was properly posted on July eighth. And if it's the board's pleasure, I'll go ahead and move down to new business because we have Judge Ogden here. And I know he's interested in the discussion about the courthouse elevator situation. Keith, do you want to kick us off?
As of yesterday afternoon, we only had two elevators operating in the courthouse. The B elevator passenger car and the jail elevator. The jail elevator went down yesterday evening, leaving us with only one elevator to serve the public and also to trans- for inmates up to holding cells on eleven. And I understand the count for today was a hundred and eighteen. There's a lot of traffic in the building today and in the courthouse. We called Coney out late last night, certainly approved overtime for them to be here. They did an overview and assessment. This morning, they were back onsite with repair pieces and parts for the jail elevator. And it's my understanding that it will now operate on independent service. So that's a position where an individual has to override the operating systems and basically operate the car manually. That's taking place now. I've authorized overtime for its repair to begin tonight with the understanding that the jail elevator will not be taken out of service and will be available for service during the day, at least on independent service. That will restore two elevators for use in the courthouse. Also, today, we're to meet with the insurance adjuster regarding the flood that happened in the courthouse, which took out the other two, two of the three passenger cars there. I'm going to ask him if they can advance funds to us to expedite the repair and the shipment of materials for repair for those two extra cars, and then ask whether or not overtime can be used to expedite the overall repair. So as it stands at this moment, we have the B elevator car in the courthouse working, and we have the jail elevator working, but only on independent service.
To get all of this operational, how much is this going to cost us?
The...
Including overtime?
I don't have a figure on the overtime yet for the jail elevator. The initial repair estimate for the flood-damaged A and C cars in the courthouse was right at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars based on a regular time schedule. Again, I'm going to ask whether or not I'll require that overtime be utilized in order to expedite the flood-damaged elevator cars and also the jail elevator.
And how soon, with overtime, everything will get done?
I don't have that number. I've been on the, that, that date. I don't have that idea at this point. This, this all began with the jail elevator late yesterday evening. I've been on the phone with our regional manager for Coney, who says that he will get specific numbers and timelines for us. The initial repair timeline for the two flood-damaged elevator cars was six to ten weeks, and that was provided to us two weeks ago. So I'm thinking we're maybe a month out using regular time labor to make the repairs. I'm hoping that can be expedited if we, if we allow and, and fund overtime work.
Presiding Judge, if you have anything you want to say?
Yes, I want to say thank you. I know that this has been a huge ordeal. And I want to say thank you to all the commissioners, staff, Keith, Stacy. Everyone's been pulling this together as best they can, I believe, and to make things work. And so I'm, I'm very happy to hear about the elevator working today, the jail elevator. We're hoping that would be the case, that we could get things operational and not have to switch to a Plan B. So that's all that I have to say, and I appreciate all your support.
I, I do have a question, Judge. As you know, criminal defendants have to be in court at nine AM. Obviously, with the elevator, elevator's not working, are you providing them with some type of courtesy as far as maybe being a minute late, two minutes late, two minutes late, based on the fact that we just don't want them to have a warrant issued for their arrest?
I, I will make sure that our judges are aware of the situation. They have already been made aware this morning by text message. We have group texts that go out to the district judges and to the special judges. So I'll make sure to get the word out, to be sure to make accommodations, given the fact that we're struggling with elevators this morning. We'll be sending an update as soon as, as soon as I leave this room to the judges. And so we'll make sure that that happens. And if I might add, I was having this conversation with Keith yesterday. It, for anybody who's riding these elevators, it's really pertinent to only go with the direction that the elevator's going, that that's where you want to go. Don't just hop on because it's the only one working. It's a capacity issue. It's overloading. These elevators aren't designed for some of the crowds that are squeezing on them. And it's people going the wrong way just because, well, I'll go ahead and jump on because I'm here. I've seen a lot of people getting aggressive with the doors again, and that in the past has created jams. We've had them hold the doors open too long, and it creates a buzz, and that makes the elevator doors close very slowly. So there's no other real way to combat that other than word of mouth. But if anybody would please, you know, help express that to folks as you're riding and/or practice that yourselves, it would be helpful. I will also say that as of this morning, then Renee Proxor Law Trial Court Administrator notices close to the elevators, I think in the courthouse, that if you have business on three and five, utilize the, the elevators in the annex and walk over. So we're trying to do as best we can to help alleviate some of that pressure right now. I think that should probably be a good practice in any event, you know, until the cars are restored. I will say this one other thing, that our first jury term is, is last week of August. As you know, our, the last jury term before the summer break in terms of jury terms, we had to move jury trials to three, two, and one. And so if at all possible, if we can have those cars restored before the next jury term, which is August.
Uh, the last week in August?
Yes. Which is the August twenty-fifth jury docket, then that would be optimal because then we don't have to shift jury trials to three, two, and one in the courthouse.
I know it's been an inconvenience for everybody involved. We appreciate your patience, Judge.
Well, I, I appreciate everything that you all have done. I, I mean, it's, that Sunday when we had the Monday, everyone was down here and as quickly as possible to restore the courtroom. So it's been, it's been a big job, and I know it's been a lot of work for, with the people that run this building. So appreciate it very much. Thank you all.
I think there's one other thing that needs to be said publicly for everybody here is that we have two stairwells that service both the courthouse and the annex. I know people don't like to use them. An elevator ride is easier, but the stairwells are there and they can be utilized.
Okay, any other, is there any action you need from us today under that piece other than what you've already done?
I'm, I'm sorry, Marcy was asking me if I could climb stairs. Ask, ask the question again.
Is there any other action on this item that you need from us?
I don't think so. Just be mindful of, of the conversation I expect to have with our insurance adjuster this afternoon. And also, we need to expect overtime billing in order to advance the repair work as quickly as possible.
Okay. Well, going back to item one, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Your Honor, for being here.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the claims?
Motion approved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any change to the blanket? No change? Somebody care to make a motion?
Motion approved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have the consent agenda. If there's no individual consideration, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, items four through eleven.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item twelve is to post the warrant clearing event. These are posters that have been displayed around the courthouse before.
Motion approved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item thirteen is to request the finance authority for funding for the Shine Program. This is largely what's been used in the past to help buy equipment and cover shortfalls in what the city grant provides for the underwriting of the program. I do want to point out that effective July first, Oklahoma City has modified their program agreement with us to not include graffiti abatement on private property any longer. And so if that continues to be a service that we wish to provide, then that would have to come from, most likely, these funds as well to shore up that reimbursement. So...
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The assessor?
And this is our request to modify the hallway on the third floor, north side, west end, to create teller windows. This would allow for social distancing and also provide some, for some much-needed space on the west end where there's currently a lot of area. And we've provided plans and...
On the assessor item? Okay.
So I just want to make sure, and I was made aware right before this meeting by Marcy, to make sure we know where the spending is going to be coming from. And so Marcy had sent me an email on May twelfth, an infrastructure, it was recommended for us to pay for this project, correct? Yeah, and it was approved. And so we need to decide if it's going to be coming from capital because it was not a line item in general, and I don't see it on the estimate.
Gretchen.
Oh, Budget Board approved it? Okay. I just want to make sure because it's not a line item, that we have approval in order to report.
I think what happened is the Budget Board approved it prior year. We couldn't get our quotes in, and we couldn't get that timely. And so when this year arose, so I think it was carried over...
Are you speaking to Mike?
I'm sorry. I think it was carried over to the ensuing budget, but it was approved by the Budget Board some time ago.
Cody, do you recall? So you feel comfortable that the money's been identified where it's coming from?
It's in excess of that. I think our entire allotment was a hundred thousand dollars.
Had you encumbered it?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering is...
It needs to be encumbered. It's not in the, it's not in the assessor capital. It was moved over to general so it would continue over to the ensuing school year market loss. So I think it's in county capital.
Yeah, I got it. I would need to do some research to be able to answer your question, Commissioner. I apologize.
Do you care if this gets laid over a week, or does that disrupt plans, Gretchen?
Um, Chris is in charge of this project. Um, I can't answer that.
Okay.
I would like to have it start yesterday, but I don't think it's going to happen.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Foster. Um, the, the vendors that are going to be working on this project, they're waiting for a PO. As soon as a PO is, is given to them, they can put their orders in. There's granite, there's glass. These things have, have, um, lead times, and until we put the order in, we won't get a lead time. But generally, you're talking two weeks to six weeks for granite, two weeks to a month for, for glass. As soon as that happens, as soon as the materials come in, the work itself will probably be about somewhere between ten days and three weeks. So that's, that's the general timeline as we know it right now. Once the orders are put in and the lead times are given, we'll, we'll have a more exact timeline.
We're looking at roughly two months after the PO's issued.
Yes.
Would the Board consider approving itself to be covered for the fall?
I, I just want to be sure that we know where they're coming from and that we can afford it. We're running tight here lately.
So I was just informed, you know, that this was something that was brought for the last estimate of need. And so their anticipation that was rolled over into this year's funding. And so I pulled this year's estimate of need just now and got a copy of it. There should have been a line item, so we would have encumbered it. And so I just need to make sure if those funds are available, which I'm sure they are. And so I would feel comfortable with the approval of an encumbrance defense so we could move forward. And then if, if we run into any issues, then we can put it on the agenda for next week. But if it was something that was already encumbered and just not listed, then we should be fine.
Budgeted.
Budgeted, yeah, and not listed. Well, it's, if it was encumbered, I mean, I don't know, I don't have that, but it wasn't listed, yeah, as a line item for the budget.
It's your pleasure.
We're pretty honest. Guess, who's standing?
I know. Okay, well, you want to make a motion, Paul? Are you concerned?
No, if I remember correctly, there was something involved in the rollover. We may need to absolutely confirm that, but I'm, I'm fairly sure that did happen.
Okay. Well, there's no harm in doing it based on encumbrance, and I think it'll be okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the pending encumbrance.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. DA, this is court filing piece. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Nothing to say about it, is there?
Second.
No. All in favor, say aye. And same thing again on sixteen. This is a different case, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
David Barnes?
Good morning, Commissioners. Items seventeen and nineteen are annual fire equipment agreements with the War Acres and Choctaw Fire Departments respectively. And item eighteen is the annual lease agreement with City of Oklahoma City for our office space at the Regional Multi-Agency Coordination Center on Martin Luther King.
Affectionately referred to as the bunker.
Correct. Some will.
Is that for all, you want to do nineteen too? Are you...
That'd be fine, all together.
Yeah, so you're doing all three items?
Yes, sir.
In your motion?
Some will.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Engineering.
Item twenty is the copier lease for this coming fiscal year.
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item twenty-one is a change order for nineteen thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars for our ARPA project on the fifth floor. Uh, we're going to shrink some offices on the north side, creating more of a hallway space and actually putting some windows in those offices.
So still within our change order?
Yes.
Window?
Yeah. We're within our ten percent.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then this is...
Yeah, item twenty-two is kind of a unique item. Phillips sixty-six had a high department spill some years back on their property on Tenth Street, which is a section line road in an incorporated part of the county. We have a twelve-foot stripper right-of-way that we got from them in addition to the statutory right-of-way. So they, the plan is to put a deed restriction on all that property so that you can't drill groundwater wells because the water well would be, obviously have the contamination in it. So they want us to put that same restriction on our twelve-foot strip, which is no harm to us to do that. We weren't going to put a water well there anyway. Um, we have a good working relationship with this company, then you get oil royalties from them and so forth. So I'd recommend we do them this courtesy.
Some will, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hannah?
Good morning. Uh, this is a standard renewal between us and Oklahoma City County. They provide our Power Through Choices program for community-based kids, and it's a partnership that for a couple of years. So I request your approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Under Chair. Thank you.
Good morning. This is a, this is a new agreement. We're formalizing a longstanding handshake agreement with Metro Technology Centers. Basically, when they hold a Peace Officer Certification Academy, we provide instructors for different subject matter. We've been doing that since they, since they were running these academies for the past several years. And, and they just want to formalize that. And in return for us providing instructors for different subjects, we get free spots in their, in their academy to, if we need to certify somebody, if we're hiring somebody new, we also get use of their facilities. So it's just basically, nothing's changing on our end. They're just formalizing the relationship on their end to kind of, it's kind of an accounting thing for them to attract what's coming in, what's coming out, so...
How often does certification program occur annually?
They run two academies a year right now, so...
And they tell me they really enjoy having this partnership with you.
Yes, yes. Superintendent Collins is, is, is very happy with the partnership. He says that all the time.
Anywhere we can get the exact dates, I'd love to come to a graduation or...
Uh, we can certainly add you to the list of the graduation announcements and go from there. Yeah, I'll make that request.
Some will.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second, SRO?
Mm-hmm. I believe it's the mountains. I remember, right?
Yep. Is there a motion?
Motion approved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Image net?
Yep, copiers.
Renewal, moving on.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. The last one is our OMEs connection to State Fiber at Kraus.
Some will, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time, sir. And is there a Commissioner comments, District One?
No comment.
Three?
Uh, no comment.
And any new business? Citizens? Seeing no one, there's no executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Y'all in?
No, I'm on the wrong date.
No, I didn't think I got any. Good to go? Ready? I'll call the PBA together. I'll, Commissioner Lowe, Paul Foster, Brian Mon present, July eighth. It's properly posted. Is there approval of the minutes for July first?
Motion approved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve the claims?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Lowe, just item three.
Departmental item.
Good morning. Um, this is to request the trustees for the Oklahoma Democratic Legislative Caucus to use the executive boardroom at ACOG, uh, July sixteenth between ten AM to two PM.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item four is a final payment to Super Roots for the roof replacement at seventy-four oh one Northeast Twenty-third, a property currently being used for the district attorney's file storage. If you remember, there had been budgeted right at a million dollars of PBA bond funding for this and the demolition, and I'm happy to say that this is coming in right at budget. I'm sorry? Completed, yeah. And it's met with the approval of our inspection crew, White and Associates, Aaron and his rep. They were put on board too to make sure that everything's done according to code and that the warranty documentation is provided to the county and everything is in place.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Item fi- five is the third payout on the ICB remodel project in the amount of four hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and four dollars and eighty-two cents to Lingo Construction.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any board comments on this agenda? Hearing none. Seeing any citizens who want to speak? None? Is there any new business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.